Welcome, everyone, to your regularly scheduled Tuesday, October 7th, open session for the City Council. May we have some quiet, please? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
I would be delighted to. Councilmember Keldorf, here. Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Councilmember Boyes.
Here.
Mayor Protem Baldino.
Here.
And Mayor Pimentel.
Here. And we will start out by the invocation delivered by Samara Gideon Dela Cruz from RTLA Church where, and followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Keldorf. If we could all please rise.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you that you've provided us with safe travel mercies to arrive here. I pray, Father God, for every family that's in here today. I pray for every councilman that's in here today. I pray for unity amongst the city, Father God, and I thank you for just creating the space where we get to meet here tonight. I pray, Father God, that as people here go home today, that they get home safely, and I pray, Lord God, that you just allow your Holy Spirit to fall in this room today. I pray, Father God, for each council member, Lord God, I pray that you encamp your angels around them, protect them, Father God. I thank you for their service, and in your precious blood and holy name, I always pray. Amen.
Thank you. If you could please turn towards the flag, put your hand over your heart and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Gideon Dela Cruz, first time out. And thank you very much, Councilmember Keldorf. Okay, we're going to start with two special presentations, National Bullying Prevention Month and United Against Hate Week. Councilmember Drew.
All right. Whereas bullying is the aggressive use of power targeting another person or group of people with repeated unwanted words of action, hurting them emotionally or physically; and whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and online through technology; and whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually; and whereas thousands of children and adolescents are affected by bullying annually in our community; and whereas targets of bullying are at increased risk of depression, anxiety, sleep difficulties, lower academic achievement, and dropping out of school; and students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, interacting online, and attending community activities; and whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors; and whereas children who witness bullying often feel less safe, helpless to stop it, and intimidated. Now therefore, the mayor and the members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 National Bullying Prevention Month and encourage schools, students, parents, recreation programs, religious institutions, businesses, and community organizations to be encouraged to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our communities safer for all children and adolescents. And accepting will be Linnea Palmer from our Recreation Department.
Thank you, Council, on behalf of the Recreation Parks and Library Department and the whole El Segundo community. So, thank you.
Yes, I have the honor of reading the city's proclamation for the United Against Hate Week. Whereas the United States is a nation of immigrants whose strength comes from its diversity; and whereas the Constitution enshrines equality on all individuals regardless of race, gender, orientation, religion, or political views; and whereas hate speech is increasingly prevalent and propagates discriminatory views against groups and individuals; and whereas the City of El Segundo does not condone or tolerate discrimination in any form; and whereas deep divisions within our country are the result of extreme ideology, further strengthening a cycle of mistrust and suspicion fueled by fear, anxiety, and insecurity, the number of hate crimes across the United States has increased dramatically. And whereas the City of El Segundo is dedicated to preventing and opposing hate and intolerance in our community, the City Council presents this proclamation in support of LA United Against Hate Week 2025, and the city advocates to stop hate, intolerance, and bullying and promote safe, inclusive, and equitable neighborhoods. And whereas education, compassion, critical thinking, and cooperation are key to unlocking understanding and embracing differences between people. Now therefore, on this seventh day of October 2025, the mayor and the members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim October 19 through 25th, LA Versus Hate, United Against Hate Week, and join other communities in California and cities across this country in this fourth annual LA Versus Hate, United Against Hate Week 2025 as an important step in bridging divisions while strengthening and healing our communities. And I believe we have Pastor Caleb Ho to accept. Thank you, sir. You want to say anything? Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers and mayor. I am Reverend St. Caleb Ho, and I am the senior pastor at El Segundo United Methodist Church, and I am just so grateful for our city and for all of you and for the spirit of unity as we come together today to affirm that we together stand united against hate. And thank you for this powerful proclamation. You have articulated our community's highest aspiration to be a place of safety and belonging for all, and we are declaring our support for every person regardless of their race, religion, ability, age, sexuality, gender identity, or immigration status. Our thank you for standing for unity in a time where this aspiration is being tested, when hateful and polarizing language echoes from national platforms, when our cities are no longer safe for all, when our algorithms are pushing hateful rhetoric seeking to divide us, feeding us synthesized reason to dehumanize each other rather than seeing the beauty of our humanity in every single human being. So may this proclamation be a promise that guides our work. May we set aside our fears, our differences, our own agendas, and come together as a people, as fellow human beings. And I pray that we are a people of our word, that we truly come together and live out the words on this page, so that years from now, our children will know that when our unity was tested, that we chose love. Thank you.
I believe we have about 30.
Okay, that's good. Math for Marines, perfect. That leaves us, so with the public comment, 30 minutes, 30 people, one minute per person, so it's going to be like county supervisor meeting, fast. I would ask this, there's a reason none of us are on the school board because children, when it's your kids, it's always an emotional issue, so we get that. So if we can move quickly between the comments and hold off on applause and things like that, so we can get through it all, I think most of us have probably been involved in every single one of the programs that are represented here, whether it's Beach Cities or Trojan or whichever, or some of at the same time. So just be patient with us, we'll be patient with you, we should get through this in about 35, 40 minutes if we have 30 speakers, and who's first?
Scott Houston, please.
I get my one minute, right? All right, good evening, mayor, members of the City Council, Scott Houston, longtime El Segundo resident, also your board member at the West Base Municipal Water District. But again, I'm not here tonight to talk about the water district, I'm here to talk about United Against Hate Week on behalf of our South Bay Community Coalition Against Hate, of which the City of El Segundo is a member, our school district is a member, the water district is a member, all of our beach cities are members, the school districts as well as El Camino College, and a number of our faith organizations, as well as Supervisor Holly Mitchell, who's helping us. So, thank you so much for the recognition, for the proclamation. I just want to let everyone know that United Against Hate Week is October 19 through the 25th. We have a series of events that'll be happening in our beach cities. You can go to our website, it's southbayversushate.org, southbayvs-hate.org. I just want you to note that here in El Segundo, on Wednesday, October 22nd, will be a candlelight vigil, as we have done for a number of years, and I'll leave you with this, you mentioned some statistics, I was looking those up as well. Our most recent report in the county was from 2023, where hate crimes have jumped 45% since 1980, which is the highest level in 43 years.
Your time, sorry about that.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate your time.
The candlelight, does that start in Manhattan Beach this year?
No, this one will be, this one will be here in El Segundo, El Segundo City Plaza.
Thank you, sir.
You got it. All right, thank you.
Tim Arnold, please.
Hi, my name is Tim Arnold, I'm an El Segundo resident. I have three things that I want to discuss. I'm asking that the City Council table the discussion about the allocation of lanes until November, and allow the two sports and the three user groups to meet with the subcommittee and city staff to find out exactly what sports and user groups actually want and need. I think water polo, swim, and the city can come to some sort of agreement that would benefit everyone and provide the maximum amount of revenue for the city. Second point, Beach Cities Alpha, we support the fee increase, and if you're going to vote on that tonight, we fully support the fee increase, we do. We would add that we think primetime should end at 8:00 PM, not 7:00. The pool will be completely filled until 8:00 o'clock, and that's a missed revenue opportunity. And then the final thing is, we understand that maybe we were beginning to be offered the instructional pool, which is not an option for competitive swimming, it's too shallow and too warm. It would be a great option for city-run lessons.
Mr. Arnold, your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Murphy, please.
Honorable mayor and City Council members, my name is Tim Murphy, I'm an El Segundo resident and head age group coach with Beach Cities Alpha. My daughter's a member of the team and a student at Richmond Street School. I'm especially concerned that a loss and or reduction of time in the competition pool at the Aquatic Center will fragment our team and have a negative impact on my daughter's experience with BCA, where she's formed so many meaningful friendships and gained so much confidence. As residents, it's essential to her and my family that she continues to have access and options at the Aquatic Center throughout her aquatic journey. Any changes to her current practice schedule will almost certainly make that more difficult. I'm also disappointed the proposed plan makes no mention of youth swimming programming at the plunge when it reopens next year. One of my daughter's first memories of her new life in El Segundo was our walks from home to the plunge, just blast around in the shallow pool while she was still learning how to swim, so we've been excited about the prospect of her swimming there again. As a professional coach for nearly two decades, I've always treasured the opportunity to grow and promote the sport of swimming while guiding generations of local talents.
Mr. Murphy, your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
I've got to get used to this short timer.
David Tong.
May I make one request? My son is also speaking, and I think he's right after me, Alex Tong, so if we could have two minutes together, would appreciate it.
Can you consolidate the cards? Do we have a card for second time? Yeah, that works.
All right, thank you for that. My name is Dave Tong, I'm on the BCA board, I live next to the plunge on Concord. BCA has the most residents and has paid the most fees of any user group, but BCA was excluded from the discussions that led to the lane allocations in the current plan. We first learned about them at the September Aquatics Subcommittee meeting. Since then, our leadership has met with city staff who have told us the plan won't be changed. Yesterday, I reported to you all that we have invoked the dispute resolution clause in the pool allocation guidelines. This requires our concerns to be included as a discussion item at the next Subcommittee meeting. However, since then, staff has told me that the dispute resolution clause, which I found on the city's website, was never approved, so I guess we have no formal way to have our concerns addressed but show up here tonight. So here's what we request.
Mr. Tong, did you want your son to speak now?
Well, that was a minute.
Could you smell you got the one minute? So do you want him to do his minute?
So I'm just going to, I've got 30 seconds, or he's got a 30-second speech.
Oh, he's going to yield his time to you.
Son, you yield my time. Okay, thank you.
So you guys are going to switch at 30 seconds?
Off you go.
All right.
All right, I'm almost done. What we approve is what Mr. Arnold already mentioned, keep the rates from 3 to 8, the prime rates, we support the rate increases, and send the lane allocation issue back to the committee with instructions to develop a process where all the user groups can participate in a plan that we can all agree on. BCA has told the staff, we don't want to dominate the primetime time at plunge and ESAC. We are swimmers, but we support aquatics. We want to work with water polo. Thank you for your time.
Young Mr. Tong, the floor is yours.
My name is Alex Tong. I live three houses away from the plunge. I'm a BCA swimmer, but my swimming journey started in the city lessons at the plunge. I made it all the way through the program. I have been waiting for the plunge to reopen for years. The thought of not being able to continue my swimming journey there is really disappointing. Finally, I can tell you, I can tell you the instructional pool at ESAC is not safe for training. We dive into the water of practice, and the water is too shallow for that.
Mr. Tong, you were at time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mel Quo.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Mel Quo, and I am volunteer president for Beach Cities Alpha. I'm honored to represent 100 El Segundo and Wiseburn resident children who have chosen aquatics as one of their recreational activities. A swim team like ours welcomes all children regardless of talent level, pedigree, or gender. We teach basics to beginners, and we have a support system that allows swimmers to pursue their ultimate swim dreams and goals, whatever they may be. Swimming has provided the best access to aquatics recreation for the city's children, and in particular, the city's young girls. Swim teams are typically well-balanced, 50/50 girls and boys. Our team is no different, so when decision-makers like yourselves talk about equity and fairness, I would ask that you also include a thoughtful analysis on the impact to the city's girls and their opportunities. I would like to work with the city, we've tried to talk, and we would like to continue to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quo.
And I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Justin Max.
My name is Justin Max, and I'm an El Segundo resident. I'm also the head coach of Beach Cities Alpha Club Swim Team. As you can guess, I'm here to express concern over the proposed aquatics business plan as stated in my October 30 email to the council. In addition to all the other concerns with proposed lane reallocations, I would like to reiterate to the council members that a significant portion of the rental time attributed to youth swimming in the plan will in reality go unused, in my estimation will cause the plan to miss its cost recovery projections by more than $100,000. This is largely due to the instructional pool being insufficient and unsafe body of water for many of our athletes and much of our programming. Furthermore, I would like to express that at no point prior to the presentation of the plan on September 15th was our team contacted to ask if we are willing to rent the almost 7,000 additional lane hours assigned to us in the plan. I communicate with Jolene Lomans monthly, I met with the city's aquatic consultant back in May, and at no time was anything of this scope ever discussed or presented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Max.
Leonard Colkey, please.
My name is Christina Vasquez Barhado. I'm a 20-year resident of El Segundo, first-generation Mexican-American, and integral part of the Hispanic-Latin community here in El Segundo. I'm heartbroken to hear that the vice chair of the DEI was interrupted when accepting the proclamation during Hispanic Heritage Month at last, the last meeting. Regardless of your intent, Mayor Pimentel, your censorship undermines the trust and silences underrepresented voices that need to be heard. We matter, I matter. My mom came here undocumented in the 50s during the Bracero Program. She lived in great fear of being deported, and my family lived in great fear. And although she found a path to U.S. citizenship, her experience matters. My experience as an immigrant or daughter of immigrants matters.
Ms. Vasquez, your time.
Do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alyssa Rizzo, please. Alyssa Rizzo.
My name is Alyssa Rizzo. I'm an El Segundo resident, and I'm raising a family here. I was disappointed to learn and see the speaker accepting the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation was interrupted mid-remarks at last council meeting. Regardless of the intent, that action undermines trust and silences voices that should be heard. As a person who is Latino, raising children here to be proud of their culture, actions like these send a message, first, that we are not welcomed, and even worse, it sends a message that we should live in the shadows of this community. We love El Segundo for a variety of reasons and chose to live here, understanding some of its dark history, and ultimately moved here because we truly believe that this is a community that is evolving and welcoming to our growing diverse community. Although the proclamation may seem insignificant, for some people who identify in these groups, it is very significant. Even more so now, when so much of the messaging to the Hispanic community is that we don't belong, these proclamations signal that, yes, we do belong in El Segundo.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you. My name is Julie Habner, and I'm a Wiseburn resident. Like many of tonight's speakers, I'm here to support Beach Cities Alpha. My comment today is a point of reminder for the council and perhaps a point of new information for others, and it is this: When it comes to the Aquatic Center, we Wiseburn residents are considered El Segundo residents, and on this issue, our interests should be represented by this council. To save you some time, this information is found in Section 3C on the bottom of Page 3 of the 2019, 2019 Joint Youth Agreement, and reads, "All persons residing in the Wiseburn District's boundaries and all employees of the district and DaVinci Schools are considered city residents for purposes of the Aquatics Center." I ask that when you deliberate on this issue, that you represent the dozens of Wiseburn families who would be negatively affected by this proposed change. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hopper.
Mark Hubaldi.
Good evening, council. I'm an El Segundo resident, I've lived here about six years. My son is on the Beach Cities Alpha Swim Team. He goes to Richmond Street School and sees the construction on the plunge every day. He started his swimming journey at the plunge in the El Segundo rec lessons and worked his way all the way through the program. He did the dolphin program so many times, they were like, get out of here, go find a swim team. So we did, and it's in El Segundo, very convenient, and him losing access to his pool, or all of our pools, for, you know, basically because we haven't been consulted or whatever for any reason, you know, it's unfair to him and the other athletes in the town, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bobby.
Lee Amitai.
Good evening, mayor and City Council members. My name is Lee Amitai, and I've been a proud El Segundo resident for eight years. My children Natalie and Jackson Reed have been part of our community's swim program for the last five years. They began swimming with Alpha Aquatics, now Beach Cities Alpha, during the pandemic, a time when the world around them felt uncertain and chaotic, when so much of their childhood was suddenly put on pause, the El Segundo Aquatic Center pool became their refuge, a place that gave them strength, structure, and a sense of normalcy when everything else was uncertain. The proposed aquatic financial plan would eliminate BCA's weekday afternoon lanes, forcing kids to travel outside of our city and breaking apart the community we've built here. Over 100 local families depend on this pool for swim training. Taking away access would mean longer commutes, higher costs, and fewer opportunities for our kids to grow, compete, and thrive right here in their hometown. This pool is more than water and lanes. It's where friendship forms, character is built, and civic pride grows. Please reject any plan that reduces BCA's access. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Amitai.
Amy Pragel.
My name is Amy Pragel, and I'm here with my husband Jonathan. We have been homeowners for the last 12 years as part of the Wiseburn Resident District. I'm here with my daughter as well, Autumn Pragel. She has been swimming at El Segundo Aquatic Center for the last 13 months. She spent the last 12 months in the instructional pool, and in the last month, she finally got to the big pool. She's really thriving, she loves jumping off the blocks, she loves doing flip turns, and the smaller pool would be absolutely insufficient. We appreciate your time here and listening to our concerns. What we're looking to do is make sure that we can nurture our kids with positive activities like swim, and help them grow and grow confidence, and just continue to love swim. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pragel.
This one doesn't have a last name, but I'm looking for Veer.
My name is Veer, and I've been swimming for BCA for four years now. I think that it's not a very good idea to cut down on our pool space because it's really healthy for all of us to be swimming, and it's really fun, too, and the smaller pool wouldn't allow us to do dives, flip turns, which are like really important for us, so I really think that we should keep having our pool space, but also, we need to have space for water polo, so I think there could be a better way to split both instead of half and half because we have way more swimmers and people than water polo does, and yeah, thank you.
Veer, can we grab your last name? Say it again? You got it.
Mackenzie Fancher.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Mackenzie Fancher. I'm a 7th grader at Wiser Middle School, and I swim at Beach Cities Alpha. My love for swimming began right here in El Segundo, when I took lessons with Coach Bailey through the Recreation and Park Program. Those lessons taught me discipline, confidence, teamwork, and they gave me the chance to grow from a beginner to a competitive swimmer. Under the new plan, our team would lose time in deep competitive pools and be moved to the shallow instructional pools late at night. That pool is 85 degrees and only 2 and 1/2 to 4 and 1/2 feet deep. It is great for lessons, but it makes competitive swimming impossible. This changes would especially hurt our younger swimmers under 13 years old. That is the age when kids fall in love with swimming and start to dream about the future in their sport. If we do not have enough lanes or have to train in a shallow pool, younger swimmers will not. younger swimmers will not get practice or progress they need. When they go to meets and do not play swell, it can be discouraging and make them want to quit. That can affect their confidence and self-esteem, not just in swimming, but in life. Swimming late at night would also make it hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mitra Engineer.
Good evening. My name is Mitra Engineer, resident El Segundo since 2017. I have four swimmers who swim at different levels with BCA. If the proposed aquatic business proposal with revised lane assignments and pool time is approved, it will mean our team will most likely have to reassign practices to locations outside of El Segundo. This decision will force me to decide on which of my children will continue to swim and which ones will have to give up their dream and passion. It will be impossible to make any practice when our school dismissal is at 4:00 p.m. and the distance to the pool is farther, not to mention multiple pool sites in the same evening for all four of my kids. Your decision holds the future of my swimmers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Engineer.
Juan Marquez.
Hi. Good night for everybody. We live in Wiseburn, and I am the parent of two swimmers in Beach Cities Alpha right now. One is in HPP, and another one is a kid that is in autism spectrum. We need a greater space on the pool and keep the schedules actually because, like said, Mitra, many of the parents have a lot of swimmers here and need a good schedule for that. And the history of our ancestors is always the foundation of our operation and future. I have seven years in this country, and I walk across the Urosari. Urosari did at least 50 swimmer Olympics in this area. Many of our swimmers have dreams, and they want to do the same that did at Urosari with the swimmers. We need the space on the pool. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Marquez.
Alexander Zaruski? Zarzusi? I'm sorry.
Hello. My name is Alex Zachzewski, and I'm a senior at DaVinci Science High School. I've been a dedicated member of our high school swim team for the past four years, and I'm also part of Beach Cities Alpha. When our practices are held at Sback, it only takes me about 10 minutes to get there. But when we're assigned to other pools like LMU, it can take me over 30 minutes each way. That time could otherwise go towards academics, rest, or recovery. Beyond convenience, practicing at our own high school pool allows me and my teammates to properly train for our final season and CIF competitions. The proposed smaller pool simply isn't suitable for the level of competitive training we do. It limits our ability to run full sets, build endurance, and prepare effectively. I respectfully ask that you consider allowing us continued access to the Sback pool. It's not just about convenience. It's about giving student athletes the resources we need to represent our community at the highest level. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you, Mr. Zachzewski.
Theo Habner.
Honorable mayor and city council, my name is Theo Habner. I'm a freshman at DaVinci Science, swim for BCA, and I'm a Wiseburn resident. As a Wiseburn-DaVinci swimmer who will be representing my school at CIFs, being able to practice in my home pool, whether it's with my school or my club team, makes me feel comfortable and confident for when the school swim season starts. If this proposal goes through, I, along with many other BCA, El Segundo, Wiseburn residents, will have to travel significantly further on a daily basis to get to practice. Please think about how important the pools are to us swimmers and help us keep our time at the El Segundo Aquatic Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Habner.
Tom Visistri.
Good evening, mayor, mayor pro tem, city council. Thank you so much for allowing us to join you this evening. My name is Tom Visistri. I'm a Hermosa Beach resident. I am the father of Kenny, my daughter, 13, who has been swimming with BCA for quite a while. These are her best friends. Nina is a Wiseburn resident. Tori is an El Segundo resident. And this move disproportionately affects girls. Girls who swim versus the, probably I can count on one, two hands, the girls that swim in water polo. If you were going to reduce swim time for these, for BCA, it would, again, disproportionately affect girls. And parents like me and all the folks here, we drive these girls and boys to practice two to three times a week in El Segundo. We eat at In-N-Out, at Habit, at Chipotle, El Gringo, Cogura. Not at Rock and Brew's, but we consume.
Pardon, Mr. Visistri. Your time. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Avalon Kim and Gabby Nicholas, please.
Good evening. My name's Gabby Nicholas. I'm a resident of Redonda Beach. I've been on Beach Cities, now Beach Cities Alpha, for the past 11 years. Swimming has become such a vital part of my life, and being in this community has given me a sense of belonging, autonomy, and opportunities I could never imagine. Living in the South Bay, we have the possibility to learn and know how to swim, and to exercise that ability is rare. Limiting it is a disservice to us all, all the young athletes sitting behind me right now, and it isn't something that should be taken lightly. We support sharing this pool, but not at the expense of our time and ability to train in adequate welcome conditions.
Hi. My name's Avalon Kim, and I've been part of Beach Cities Alpha since I was seven. I'm now in 11th grade. As a girl, swimming is one of the few sports I feel like I can safely excel in. Swimming is more than a workout for us. It's where we've built friendships, learned dedication, and represented the South Bay. This pool means so much to us. Please reconsider your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim and Ms. Nicholas.
Sellers Stowe.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak in front of you all. I'm speaking here on behalf of my child who swims in this wonderful city. The sport of swimming and Beach Cities Alpha, Beach Cities Alpha, has been a form of therapy for my children. Finding a sport that is supportive of kids with different skill sets and limitations can be a challenge. But swimming has been the answer. Beach Cities Alpha has been the answer. Beach Cities Alpha has a volunteer program that has allowed my children to learn the value of volunteer work as he helps younger children learn to navigate swim meet. I'm unclear as to why this wonderful city would take away a pool from the kids on Beach Cities Alpha, and I hope everyone can keep an open mind to alternatives. My children are not swimming to make the 2028 Olympics. It would be cool. They are swimming with Beach Cities Alpha to become better citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stowe.
Rachel McPherson.
Good evening. I'm an El Segundo resident, and I have three daughters, all of who swam for Alpha, now BCA. I was here back in 2019 when Alpha was competing for lane space with Beach Cities, and I'm pleased that this council's predecessors were able to come to an agreement that facilitated and benefited both teams. You guys wanted a world-class aquatics program back then, and we've delivered. We have athletics in high school and in clubs that are delivering at the highest level. My 10th grader, my daughter, went to CIFs for D1 as a freshman last year and represented El Segundo High School. And my daughter, Romi, who graduated last year, played water polo all through high school. She came from aquatics, from swim team first. So did all of her teammates, all of the leads, Ava Albertson, Harper Liberty, also in varsity now. You don't have world-class aquatics without club swim. Again, you can't eviscerate our lane hours without eviscerating the high school swim team, which is what this town is known for. Same with the surf program and the junior lifeguard program. You disappointly, oh, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Eric Healy.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Eric Healy, and I'm the sole representative of my organization, which is the Trojan Water Polo Club. I want to thank the Aquatics Subcommittee, as well specifically the city council, Mrs. Mancini and Mr. Lormins for all their work over the last seven years. Trojan has been a part of the ESAC journey since 2017, beginning with the original RFP. We are ready to continue to work hand-in-hand with the city and continue to grow water polo in this city. We are very grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Healy.
Bridget Rome.
Thank you, council members, for having me. And Bridget Rome, I live behind Center Street School. And I think our swim programs have really been good partners here in the city. As many of the kids say, they've gone through the lessons, and the natural progression is then to join a swim team. That swim team supports so many, I'm also an LA County Lifeguards. It makes those kids safe out there as they go to the beach. They're able to get on the water polo teams. They're able to join the junior lifeguards. And so I think that as we've been a good program for the city, and I really wish that you would reconsider and put it back to the Subcommittee so that we can have a voice, that they come down and they sit and talk to us about what we really need. That instructional pool is too warm, too shallow. You cannot dive. And also, I would love the opportunity to get back in the plunge. It is a place close to my heart, as many people here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rome.
Mila Ward.
Hello. My name is Mila Ward. I have been the head coach of Boys and Girls Water Polo for the past eight years at El Segundo High School. I just want to thank you guys for giving water polo the opportunity to thrive. We, I haven't written notes, but I'm just going to say that the current setup with water polo being allocated only late times is unsustainable for growth. We recently hosted a Welcome to Water Polo Day, and the late pool times were an immediate deterrent for many of the families that wanted to try out our sport. We appreciate the opportunity to continue to grow water polo in our area and honor the rich history that El Segundo has. Thanks.
Thank you, Coach Ward.
Kurt Fry.
Good evening, mayor, council members. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Kurt Fry. I am the president of South Bay United Water Polo Club. Just wanted to give a few words to say thank you to all of you for everything that you have been doing, listening to everybody, listening to all of the passion in the room, which is great. Being a swimmer myself, playing water polo in college, aquatics has been very instrumental in shaping me and who I am. And I just want to say thank you for listening. Thank you for working on this tremendously challenging problem. I would be just if I didn't acknowledge your Aquatics Subcommittee, Joe, Ally, Kelly, great people to work with. You've given them a very challenging task, I will tell you, as you've seen. But again, on behalf of South Bay United, we're here to help, right? We know this is a challenge. We've been working with the Aquatics Subcommittee and your folks for several months, and we're happy to continue. So thank you again for all of your help. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fry.
Anrow Yang.
Good afternoon, everyone. I like to say I understand where water polo is coming from. They're a competitive team. They train hard, and they deserve time in the pool just as much as we do. It's not easy to share limited space and limited hours. Unlike water polo, though, swimming is a very individual sport. We rely on every minute we get in the water to improve, and losing practice time affects our individual performance, and it also affects our whole team's ability to compete. Our current schedule works because we have built our school routines, homework time, and travel time around it. Changing that time would throw not just us off, but also our families and everything else for balancing. Thank you for your time.
I'm the mom of Olivia, so she did a very, very good job. She's a swimmer in the BCA, and she did a very great job. And we have so many El Segundo swimmers.
Ms. Yang, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Christopher Godfrey.
Good evening, city council. My name is Christopher Godfrey. I've appeared before most or all of you on different issues, but mostly at the Aquatics Subcommittee. I believe what I can offer in this moment to everybody that's here is that this process was arrived at fairly. For seven years, I was talking about the reallocation of pool time. I was talking about how that process had been done and how it would be done in the future. We've derived at that time, and people are obviously going to be confused and upset, and there seems to be a lot of misinformation that's going on. What's important is that athletes have an opportunity to make choices and that those choices aren't detrimental to their health and to their family's health. Having water polo athletes being able to practice earlier will make a big difference. No kids need to be going to bed at 8, 10 o'clock at night. That's really what's at stake for a lot of these athletes and the choices they have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Godfrey. I was unprepared for us to be done. City manager, any comments?
Really, the only comment, mayor, would be that for the majority of the speakers, this item will be discussed on D8 on the agenda under staff presentations.
Very well. Council comments?
Yeah, I got a few. This is probably not going to be pleasant, so... Couple things I want you to understand. Number one is the role of the city council in this entire process. The city council gave the Subcommittee and staff a job. The job was twofold. Number one, come up with a cost-recovery formula that would get us as close to 90% in ESAC and something as well, 50% in the plunge as possible. That's a business decision. We have to do that because what is not recovered is subsidized. I'm sure you can understand that. The second thing that came up that we asked them to look at was a more equitable solution to early pool times. I heard a lot of things today about having to go to different pools, going to LMU, and going like that. How'd you like to be finishing up your water polo practice at 10 o'clock at night on a Thursday in Torrance? Everybody has to go through these things. That's just part of the game, okay? So you haven't had to do that. Others have. And one of the things that we came up with was that one set of athletes is not more important than another set of athletes, okay? Now, I understand that you're all fighting what's best for your clubs. I completely get that. Been there. Before I got on council, I was out there, probably in that seat right there, arguing about this exact same topic. So I've been there. I get it. I understand the passion. I understand what it has to do with your kids. It means that much more. However, I would remind you all that as a user group, you are a guest in this city. It does not give you the right to disrespect our staff, to be rude, and treat them like they work for you. And I'm going to name names because it's the group that's in here that has been the biggest offender of that, especially over the past few weeks, and it is absolutely unacceptable. You're here for your kids, yet through tonight, what I've seen... unacceptable. You're here for your kids, yet through tonight, what I've seen, I'm not even sure many of you know even what you're here for. We're not choosing lane allocation tonight. That's not even our job. We're looking at what the business model is. That's what we're looking at. So to come in here, I feel bad for you, parents, kids, I do, because you've been weaponized by the people who run your club. You've been weaponized to come in here and look at us like we're the bad guy. That's wrong. It's wrong on every single level. And I hope that is not the way things are going forward, because it is completely unacceptable to act like that. You're adults. You should know better. And to bring up gender equity as an argument here, I don't even know where to begin with that one. I mean, we're trying to say, what, girls don't play water polo? I mean, why would you even come up with that? I don't know why we're making this into something that it's not. Tonight is a presentation on a business plan that we five directed our staff to go after. That's it. That's what it is. Whatever happens after that, allocation-wise, that's up to our staff. So I hope, going forward, there will be a little bit more respect for the people who work for this city that are there to help you every single day that you're in the pool. I'm done on this topic. I don't know if anybody else has any other comments.
Further, Council comments?
We aren't going to talk about this, right?
Well, we'll go to the agenda. This is just comments on the, on the comments. Okay. Anything further?
Oh, I got another topic, if we want to go after that one.
Is it responsive, responsive to public comment?
Yes, it is.
Very well. Then we'll get moving to the agenda.
So this is kind of a, kind of a, the false narrative night. The discussion on the Latin Heritage Proclamation, let's, let's set the narrative for what it actually was and what actually happened. And I noticed that the aggrieved party is not present. I would have expected that to happen, but they're not here. So when you are there to, there you are. You had a chance to speak in public comment, but you did not. When you're accepting, or anyone is accepting a proclamation, you're accepting it on behalf of the city, okay? Do the things that we do to celebrate the people in our community. If you have personal comments that you want to make, that's what public comment was for. Thirty of you just did that. You can say anything that you want at any time. However, what was said, and the reality of what was said, when the mayor interrupted and said, "You can say whatever you want, but in public comment," that's what was said. And then, you came here to take a picture. I was standing right there, and the mayor said to you, "John, you can say whatever you want. Please reread your entire statement. Just do it in public comment." There was no censorship going on. It was putting the right speech or discussion at the right moment. That's what it was. To sit there and try to dirty this man's name over that, there's a severe lack of integrity with that, and there's very disingenuous of you to do that. You know what happened, because you were there. To try to paint him like a bad guy for allowing you five minutes to say whatever you want in public comment? How is that a bad thing? How is that saying that Latins are unwelcome in El Segundo? When you make comments, when you're accepting a proclamation, you're doing it on behalf of the city. Not everybody feels this way you do. So in public comment, you can say whatever you want, because it's your emotions and it's your feelings, and we accept that, and it's not a problem. To paint him that way is way out of line. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jerome. All right, procedural motions. Good motion to read all items by title only. So moved. Second.
Baldino's second.
We have Boils on the first, Pimentel on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-oh, consent agenda. Do we have any pulls, please? Seeing none of a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Boils.
Boils on the first.
I'll second.
Keldorf on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Five-oh, we will skip down. There are no public hearings tonight. Staff presentation, item D, the Aquatics Business Plan. City Manager will present on this item.
Yes, our Director of Library, Parks, and Recreation, Ally Mancini, will give this presentation.
Ms. Mancini, the floor is yours. Would you like the lights dimmed?
No, I don't need to dim them.
Very well.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Pimentel of Mayor Pro Tem Baldino.
Before you begin, I have a list of disclosures of folks I've spoken to. Hold on. It'll take a second.
Sure.
I serve on the Aquatics Subcommittee, so we've been working on this business plan for a long time. I've worked with Joe. I've worked with Mark, who's also a member. Last week, I met with Lee Davis, also a member of the Aquatics Subcommittee, Tim Arnold, and Mel Koo, who are with the Alpha Swim Team. Okay, go ahead. Thanks.
Any other consultations?
Sounds like. I, I did also meet with Tim and Mel, so for disclosing that, that's the extent of it.
And would you please kindly send those to the clerk?
The names.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No?
Rated and roused.
All right. Again, good evening, Honorable Mayor Pimentel, Mayor Pro Tem Baldino, members of the City Council, staff, members of the community. My name is Ally Mancini. I'm the Director of Recreation, Parks, and Library. Tonight, I will be presenting a proposed business plan for the Aquatics Division within the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Library. The proposed draft plan has been available on the city's website since late last week, and the Council will have the printed documents in front of them. As such, I will be going through each of the slides and highlighting key aspects of the plan, but will not dive deep, no pun intended, into the weeds of the analysis. Additionally, I have my Aquatics Manager, Joe Lormins, with me this evening to answer any specific questions about the analysis or proposed plan, should the Council need additional details. Before I get into the presentation, I'd like to share some perspective about the plan and its purpose. The Aquatics Business Plan is designed to provide a framework for the sustainability and success of the Aquatics Division. Key to this plan is the financial model that will guide staff in determining how to ensure the facilities attain the highest cost recovery while providing residents of El Segundo with access to Learn to Swim programs, health and wellness activities, and other recreational aquatics programs. Second to that is the priority in supporting the El Segundo and Da Vinci athletic programs. And finally, we aim to support local residents who wish to participate in competitive level, level athletics. As the Director of Recreation, Parks, and Library, my goal, my job, is to provide residents of El Segundo with opportunities to participate in a wide variety of sports and athletic programs. Staff will always prioritize, to the degree possible, equal access for these sports to our fields, courts, and facilities. Tonight's presentation will include a business plan overview, a look at a more detailed plan and proposal, and snapshots of next steps in this process. This slide shows a summary of the relevant history related to the development of the Aquatics Business Plan. Staff were directed by the City Council in early spring of 2025 to create a plan that met a cost recovery goal of 90% for ESAC and 50% cost recovery for the plunge. To that end, staff hired a consultant to help conduct an analysis of the division, including, including considerations for cost recovery and more equitable use of the facilities for water sports. During this analysis, the consultant met with representatives from each user group to discuss needs for their respective programs. A 50% business plan was presented to the Council in July 2025. At that meeting, City Council asked for further analysis and more specific data that would help achieve the goals of cost recovery. In September 2025, staff presented a draft Aquatics Business Plan to the Aquatics Subcommittee for feedback and discussion. Staff have incorporated feedback into the plan being presented this evening. Some of the specific goals that the plan addresses are cost recovery, a continued focus on community programming, an increased equity in facility use, and a fully developed profit and loss model that ensures the long-term sustainability of the pools. In terms of the financial analysis, staff worked with Aquatics Subcommittee Member and Recreation and Park Commissioner, Mark Cavignolo, to research comparable facilities, pricing across both user type and region. Manager Lormins and Mr. Cavignolo worked diligently to create a ground-up historical profit and loss model that was reviewed by the Finance Director with detailed and trackable revenue and costs to be certain that the model was based on actual historical data versus assumption and trends. This slide here gives a detailed look at the current model, including actual numbers from fiscal year 2425. The current model has the Aquatics Division operating at around 74% overall cost recovery. However, during the fiscal year 2425, the cost recovery numbers were higher due to the vacancy of the Aquatics Manager position, which resulted in a significant savings in expense. Because each pool operates at a deficit, any additional facility coming online, such as the plunge, will inevitably bring down the overall cost recovery of the Aquatics Division. It is also important to note that in 2025, lifeguard salary ranges were adjusted to stay competitive within the market, which significantly increased expenses in the division. And finally, you can see on this slide that historically, there has been a significant disproportion between primetime allocation hours to swim versus water polo, with primetime hours being all hours before 7:00 PM. In 2025, swim teams had 12,000 hours of primetime use compared to water polo's 550 hours. This slide provides an overview of three critical pieces of the Aquatics Business Plan, which include pricing, use of pool time, and cost management. You can see that this plan proposes two pricing tiers based on time of use versus sport. Hours before 7:00 PM would be set at $20 per hour, and hours after 7:00 PM would be priced at $12 per hour. Additionally, the plan proposes a $1 to $2 increase for non-resident lap swimming and recreational swim. Staff are also proposing a more equitable split of pool time between sports and additional time for Learn to Swim programs. The plan proposes moving Learn to Swim programs to the plunge to free up the instructional pool for use by swim teams during the hours of 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. In addition, the swim teams would retain use of half, half, the south half of the competition pool and water polo would gain access to the north half of the competition pool. Additional hours for water polo would be offered during the 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM time at the plunge. Staff is also proposing that we consider reducing lifeguards where it is safe to do so and/or closing the facilities during low-use This slide shares more details about the proposed changes in programming and also provides an estimated cost recovery model for each pool and the division as a whole. The cost recovery estimates are ESAC at 80.4%, the plunge at 62%, Hilltop at 19.4%, and an overall cost recovery for the division at 63.2%. This slide shows the current capacity allocation of the Aquatics facilities, including the, for the use by Learn to Swim, Open Rec Swim, Lap Swim, High School Use, and Competitive Swim and Water Polo Clubs. You can see here that lap swim dominates overall use of ESAC during non-primetime hours, and youth competitive swim dominates overall use of ESAC during primetime hours. The proposed plan strives to provide more equitable access to the pool for youth water polo, which has traditionally, traditionally only had access for practices during late evening. As Council may recall, we have had several young water polo athletes and parents express concerns over the late practice schedule that can be disruptive to schoolwork and sleep. The addition of the plunge gives us an opportunity to free up space in the instructional pool to shift some swim practice activities to that pool, which is currently used by all ages of swimmers, including athletes from BCA, for laps and training activity. Staff also looked to consider drafting a use-it-or-lose-it policy that would help with recovering expenses when groups cancel their reservations on short notice. The next few slides provide more important details and information about the pricing at the facilities. And this, I believe, is the bulk of the, of the meat of the plan here. On this first slide, staff provide an overview of pricing at other local aquatics facilities, including municipal pools and those operated by school districts and/or community college districts. You can see that most of our rates are in line with other facilities, with the exception of the water polo fees, which are currently low, and swim lessons, which I will discuss on the next slide. The current low water polo fee would change with the move away from sport-specific fees to primetime and non-primetime fees. The city of El Segundo swim lesson fees are drastically lower than several other municipalities and other local private clubs. And just as a point of correction, this slide mentions a fee per hour, but it is actually a fee per class. This is also true for all of the other municipalities listed here. So our current rate is $6.25 per class, with each session consisting of eight classes, for a total of roughly $50 per resident per swim lesson session. I think that staff and Council both agree that providing low-cost Learn to Swim programs is important, which is why fees have historically been set low. However, staff believe that a modest increase in fees would be appropriate, given the rising cost to operate the pools. An increase from just $6.25 per class to $7.50 per class would net an estimated additional $85,000 in revenue. Another option would be to consider a tiered pricing system, to keep the most basic Learn to Swim classes, levels one to four, that merely focus on water safety, keep those prices very low, and consider increasing prices as the lessons become more stroke and endurance-focused. This slide shows the proposed changes to fees within the draft business plan. As a point of information, these fees would need to be officially adopted by the Council through a resolution and Council report that would be prepared by staff and brought to Council if the plan moves forward. The public would have an opportunity at that time to address the Council on any new fees or fee increases being proposed. One of the goals for the Aquatics Division moving forward is to continue increasing revenue through private rentals and unique special events. These events typically generate additional funding for the division while also supporting the competitive teams that use the facility. As the plunge comes online, staff will work to look at creative ways to boost revenue through these types of events. Staff will also work to increase filming opportunities at the pool during non-primetime hours. As I mentioned earlier, the reopening of the plunge will increase costs for the division. As is, as is expected, staff costs are the highest driver of expenses, with lifeguard costs being the most significant contributing factor. To reduce these staff, these costs, staff could look at potentially closing the plunge on Sunday, passing on some of the cost to guards to user groups, and/or reducing staffing during off-peak times. This slide provides a snapshot of the overall financial forecast for the proposed business plan, should the Council vote to move forward. Based on all of the information provided this evening, staff estimates an overall cost recovery of approximately 63.2%, with the city subsidizing the Aquatics Division, including all three pools, at a cost of around $1.2 million annually. Our next steps in this process will include bringing new fees and increased fees to the Council for adoption, and updating financial reporting mechanisms to support more transparency in actual profit and loss activity. Additionally, we would like to make the Council aware that a pay increase for swim instructors may become a necessity if demands for lessons increase significantly. Currently, staff are essentially paid the same rate to sit on the, on the, on the tower and guard the pool, and to get in the water and provide swim lessons. So this doesn't incentivize our staff to teach swim lessons. As with any other division in the city, I feel it is important that the Aquatics Division also create a career path for staff who wish to pursue aquatics as a long-term career option. This will also help retain staff, which will lower costs over time. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that Council might have. I also have our Aquatics Manager with me, and Mr. Cavignolo, should there be any specific questions?
All right, Council questions and discussion. Councilmember Keldorf.
Sure. Hi. Can you explain to us currently how the instructional pool is being rented? Is it at the same price per hour for primetime, non-primetime?
Do you want to come up?
Yep.
Joe will be able to answer these.
Thank you.
So the instructional pool is a lower cost than the competition pool, and So, the instructional pool is a lower cost than the competition pool, and in the written business plan document, we have noted that out. And the price of the instructional pool would be $14 primetime and $10 non-primetime.
Thank you. And how does that compare to current price?
The current price is $12 across the board for any other group besides water polo, who pays, I believe, $7.
Great, thank you.
Joe, how is that pool being used right now?
Currently, it's used for swim lessons, it's used for adult lap swimming. Both Beach Cities and Alpha rent it for intro to pre-comp, and they're very young swimmers. And yeah, that is all uses of the instructional pool. Any other questions on that?
Councilor Drew?
You did a lot of work on this plan. Mark, thank you. I know that was an awful lot of spreadsheets going on with this right here, so thank you for that. I also know you took a lot of hits, which should never have happened, and those of them, people that did that, should be ashamed of themselves. My question for staff is simply this: Do you believe in this business plan?
Yes.
Do you believe the business plan will work?
Yes.
Are we adequately staffed to make this happen?
I believe so.
I have no further comments.
Thank you.
I too want to thank staff. Serving in the Aquatics Subcommittee, it's a very vocal, very active group of parents that attend that meeting, and I've heard from both sides, from the swimmers, from the water polo parents, who are saying, "I can't have my kid stay out this late." I have worked with Joe now for quite some time, and I continue to be impressed with his determination, his ability to do what council asks him to do over there, which is run that facility in a way that makes sense for everyone in town. You have to admit that if one group is dominating the primetime hours, then in order to be equitable, a change is going to be made. This council asked staff to look into it, they have spent a lot of time going over what other aquatic centers are doing, and the reason why staff really picked up the laboring ore here is that we hired a third-party consultant. And when that consultant presented to city council, none of us were too pleased with the results they were giving us. They were giving us numbers that weren't based on our actual data, as far as our expenses or our user groups, they were making assumptions based upon what other pools do. And so when we drilled down into those numbers, we realized that those are not the numbers we're going to base a business plan on. We're going to look at our actual usage, we're going to try to start tracking our actual costs and expenses, because this pool will always be subsidized by tax dollars. There is not enough money to be made from user groups to make a profit at this pool. There are not enough events that can be held to somehow we're going to make money off of an aquatic center. It will always come out of our tax dollars, and so that gives us a burden and responsibility to make sure it's being used to its highest potential and serves the most diverse set of users. And so, you know, I was happy to sit down with the folks from Beach Cities Aquatics and explain to them that we have this conversation about baseball and AYSO. We need more field space. The frustration you're feeling is felt, whether it's lacrosse, whether it's Little League, you know, there is a balance that always has to be done about how we allocate the city resources to best serve our constituents. And with this plunge coming online, and I don't know why, there's some thought that people in town aren't going to use the plunge, it's there for recreational, it's there for our beginning lessons. Just because your club team may not get access doesn't mean that you're not going to get access to our pool. So, I appreciate all of your emails. If I haven't responded to you, I am remiss, but there were several emails that were sent. I appreciate you coming down and making public comment, but please understand that there was nothing done here that was behind closed doors. We have aquatics meetings all the time, we had consultants meet with all of the user groups, they met with myself as just a member of the Subcommittee, they met with Mr. Lee Davis, you know, they took all that information, and staff has done exactly what we asked them to do, which is come up with a business plan, because we're going to start spending a lot of money on staffing and maintaining two pools, and we have to have an idea of how we're going to make some of that money back. So, again, I appreciate and applaud the amount of time that's gone into this, I know it's been difficult, and anytime there's a change, especially one that affects one's child, there's going to be emotion. But I am also very supportive of the fact that we're facing this head-on before the pools open, we're trying to get ahead of it. You know, I like the idea of we may need to pay a swim instructor more if we're going to have a huge increase in providing swim lessons and not enough instructors. These are all good problems to have, people, and we're going to be able to work through them together as we always have. So please, don't leave here discouraged, know that aquatics are important in this city, and this city has invested a lot of money to the facilities that we have for the benefit of everybody here, and that includes the folks in Westburn, obviously. So, again, thank you, I'm supportive of this, I'm appreciative of the time and effort it took to put this together.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Further discussion? Councilor Boils?
Yeah, I just want to highlight, I'm thankful that we, although it was, I think, a divided vote up here years ago, we decided to shut down the Acacia Pool. Sounds terrible to say, but the reality is, we've already got a $1.1 million shortfall per annum, and we also are spending over, what, $13 million now to rebuild the plunge? Fifteen, $15 million, money that comes from, well, we're trying to find the money still, because we didn't have the money allocated, frankly. So we've invested heavily in aquatics, and if you take that $1.13 million shortage, you divide that by the number of people in town, latest census, that's $6 dollars per person. I would rather see us increase the lane rates. Excuse me, hold on one second here. I think we're way too low on the, and I agree with you that we should increase it slightly, but I think we should do more than that. If you look at where we're at, we're basically way low. I think we need to raise our residence rates to $9 per cla, I'm sorry, this is for lessons.
Lessons, thank you.
Per class.
Okay.
That'd still put us below the median, but closer to the mean.
Okay.
We're way off our peer group. And I think we need to raise the non-resident rate 1250 to 13, and also be okay with stepping that, you know, less for the begin.
Mm-hmm.
But, I mean, it's obviously important, but it's also could add a couple hundred thousand dollars that we could use, and we're just, we're way below market, I don't think we should do that. My kids learn to swim at the plunge, it's a great program. I also know when it was shut down, we had to go to the Y and other places, and that was a lot more money.
Correct.
So I think it's an incredible public benefit, I think we do have an opportunity to raise rates there, I would encourage staff to do so, I would certainly support that. Otherwise, I think the plan is great, I appreciate Mark and all the work done by the Aquatics Committee, I'm sure the Rec Park Commission weighed in as well, and staff, thank you very much. And thank you for everyone coming up and showing up in council, that was the best pledge of allegiance we've had in the entire time I've been up here, which has been a long time, so thank you all for that.
Councilmember Boils, if I can just add a point of information for all the council's consideration in potentially raising the rates, is we do have a scholarship program as well, so if there were residents in town that weren't able to afford swim lessons after the increase, we provide a $200 scholarship per year to residents, that would give them potentially three or four different, you know, sessions of swim lessons, so that would help.
Sorry, one quick question. Councilwoman Boils, were you advocating raising the swim lesson rate?
Yeah, I started by saying Lance.
Swim lessons.
I misspoke, but swim lessons, yep.
Before we write that down and go to you, Councilwoman Drew, does anyone else have an opinion on swim lesson rate? Because I do.
I do, I think if we're going to subsidize anything, then learn-to-swim is the place to do it. And I have to say, when I, before I was up here, when I was out there talking about aquatics, despite the fact that I was a competitive swimmer, I have a son who plays water polo, I was really fixated on the amount that we continue to subsidize aquatics. And what I have learned through this process is how avidly our residents are supportive of aquatics, but also all of the things that we do technically subsidize in the name of sports or recreation, or even our public library. And so that $1.1, $1.2 million number does not scare me the way that it did several years ago, actually, before I had the information. But, you know, we would also have to look at how much we subsidize parks and rec in general and all of our field space, and so I think that you've done an incredibly admirable job of trying to recover costs to the extent possible. But again, if we're going to subsidize something, I do think that learn-to-swim is the place to do it. Like I said, I have three kids, the first one is a fish, the second two sink, and I do think that that's because the plunge has been offline for as long as it has, truly, like they never grew up in the program, and I would hate to see us lose that.
Thank you.
Before I pass this back to Councilwoman Drew, I'll agree that $1.2 million is less than 1% of our general fund discretionary spend, I think it's manageable, and learn-to-swim is something that municipalities took on once it came out of the school curriculum in the 70s, that used to be something we did in public education, and so cities take that on because it's critical for water safety, and any nickel that we spend on that, I think we get back on the liability of having an accident in the pool because a child can't swim. Over to you, Councilwoman Drew.
Ma, just real quick, athletes that got up to speak, really well done. That is a difficult skill, not many people have it, and it will do you a huge service in the future, so any chance you get to go up and speak your mind like that, it was great, it was just really nice to see you, and so thank you for that.
I just want to say, we are subsidizing significantly, we are half the median, that's all I'm saying. We're half the median for lessons. Those are peer cities, so it's an opportunity.
Thank you.
I understand, and also, I think that, to your point, Director Mancini, the scholarship program probably addresses the children who are least likely to have access to swim lessons. I know, I mentioned to Councilwoman Boils, I came from a county supervisor meeting, 62% of children in our supervisory district are less than 200% of the poverty line, 23% will be less than 1% of them, or less than one interracial poverty line, so that's still living on $32,000 a year for a family of four. That is all within our supervisory district, and people like that are coming to our area to swim, so I do endorse, and if it has to come up slightly, I'm not averse to that, I know we're not tracking inflation on the youth swim rates, but I do think it's important we keep them as low as we can tolerate.
To that point, let's at least put a CPI on this, otherwise, we're coming back every couple of years to update this, as all of our operating expenses go up. That's fair, that takes $6.25 to $6.40 or something, but it'll keep going on.
No, I know, I agree, I know, I know, we'll have, okay. Further comments on the council?
No, I would agree that the learn-to-swim, I think, should be artificially low. I have no problem for your junior lifeguard, your higher-level type of competitive class, because at that point, you're making a choice for your child, that this is their thing. But I do think we need to figure out, especially once the plunge opens and we start hiring lifeguards and swim instructors, I think we need to give staff the discretion to be able to, you know, raise prices when needed, without having to come back to this council every time they want another $2 or another $3. Are you happy with these, Ms. Mancini?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you happy with these figures that you have, that you and Joe have looked at?
Yes.
Okay, so if we put like a CPI on top of that, which would be discretionary, you would have the ability then to?
I'm not sure.
It's what we do, we have to approve the fee schedule every year anyway, so it usually comes back with an automatic CPI adjustment, or in some cases, with the full total cost recovery when it comes to renting city services, so I think we'll see it every year anyhow.
We'll see it, and if, you know, if the plan moves forward, we will come back with, including the increases in fees, and we can provide a couple options in terms of the swim lessons and the different tiers.
Great.
For you to consider.
Well, we look forward to your judgment and good work.
Thank you.
Further council questions or discussion?
I mean, knowing the least about aquatics here, I will, I would put a great deal of faith in you to make adjustments to the implementation of a plan as it goes forward, whether it's water temperatures, configurations, things like that. God knows, we've all spent enough time on heating to know that the Olympians prefer to swim in 79 degrees, outdoor water polo in Croatia is 83 degrees, I understand all of these things now, and I would like to get rid of those brain cells as quickly as possible, but we will trust you and deputize you to try and find a way to make this work. I understand that probably in the first three to four months of it, there will be a lot of learning lessons as we implement a new pool, and if there's things that we need to do to amend a plan or to find a way to make things work better, please do not be bashful about that and do not suffer in silence, because I assure you, we will suffer with a lot of noise, in which case, our problem will become your problem. Okay, to that end.
I will move approval of the Aquatics Business Plan.
Second.
We've got Mayor Protem on the first, Boils on the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Five oh, it passes.
Thank you very much, council, for your support.
Thank you, Director Mancini. Item nine, the resolution approving the planned specifications for the repair of fence posts, distressed walls, and court surfaces at Recreation Park Project Number PW25-Tex05. Director Sassoon, if you'll give us a few minutes to clear the room.
Nobody cares about fence posts.
Okay, standby Director Sassoon, we're going to take a three-minute bio break.
Good.
We will be back here, we will be back here promptly at, actually, let's make it a six minute, 7:35.
All right. I'm hoping.
All right, 7:35. Director Sassoon.
Good evening.
Over to you on matter nine.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Portem and members of the City Council. Deciding before you is regarding the repair of the distressed walls, the fence posts, and the surface cracks at Rick Park. On general overview of the project is basically, this project consists of repairing the distressed walls, fence posts, and court surface cracking cosmetically for the entire Rick Park. And there are about 97 locations throughout the Rick Park that we have identified. The method of repair is by utilizing an epoxy which is specialized for these types of applications. So the scope of work is to remove the damaged concrete and the corroded fence posts and replace the concrete and fix the fence posts and repair the developed surface cracks in the courts. There are a few photos, as you can see, and these are really typically representative of the 97 locations where we're going to make repairs. And the goals are basically to improve safety, to extend the facility lifetime, and that's really established by stopping water intrusion and to make these any worse than they are. It also strengthens the walls and, basically, it eliminates the eye source throughout the Rick Park, and it'll look a whole lot better after we are done with this project. And this is frankly going to be a very nice project. I'm looking forward to it. The estimate of the project is a little less than a million dollars. We expect we can finish this within 50 working days, and if all goes well, we should be able to start the construction February next year, and will be done by end of May. And as part of this project, we'll be having ongoing coordination with Rick and Park staff regarding the usage of the courts. So during the work, those courts may not be available, so we try to keep that at minimum. But we'll do the coordination with Rick and Park staff, and I'll be glad to answer any question you may have.
Council questions?
I've got one. Okay, obviously, it's a million dollars to fix a lot of cracks, right? Which have built up over many, 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 many years. So is there a process, or is there a policy going to be in place where this doesn't have to get done every 20 years and maybe every six months?
Yes.
We're taking a little walk around and repairing them as they happen rather than waiting this long?
Correct. So thank you for the question. I have already discussed this with the Rick and Park and Laboratory Director, Ali Mancini. I believe she is going to have her staff to have a policy to walk around twice a year, look at the different parts of the Rick Park, and Public Works be glad to help if needed. And we can identify any ongoing maintenance issues. So the idea is not to let anything to elongate to this point, so we will have an ongoing maintenance program. I want to call it the Maintenance Preventive Maintenance Program, basically.
Other council questions? Director Sassoon.
Yes, sir.
I noted that the budget for this is 1.2 million dollars. We typically have a contingency on these of 15%. Should it be 1.1 or 1.2? Look, I love when we come in under budget, but I also don't like a bad budget. Are we off on this?
I'm sorry, you're asking if...
We budgeted 1.2, which seems very high on a $950,000 project.
The reason is, frankly, this is a project where, in process, we may run into some issues. We have categorized these in three different levels. So based on our estimate, we think, you know, we're going to be able to do this job at 950, but we have not received the bids yet. And going forward, as, you know, as we advertise, we're probably going to have better numbers as we receive bids on the project. There are not very many contractors that are capable of doing this kind of work. This is very specialized work with this particular epoxy. But as we advertise the projects and we get some numbers, I think we'll have the better numbers to, you know, to come back to the City Council at the time of our board.
Very well. Any other council questions?
No, I'll just note that this project has been discussed at the Parks Renovation Subcommittee level, and although it's expensive, this is the most economical way to make sure the posts are safe and secure, and hopefully this will allow us to, you know, put money in making more green space in other areas and other improvements, so.
All right, so we're almost to phase one of the Rick Park renovation. We've got, the bathroom was .5, now this will be .75, and we're very, very close to beginning.
Every day is progress.
We're almost to the beginning.
The teen center is actually coming next meeting.
Yes.
I will have a collective breath holding. Okay, City Attorney, would you read this, read the motion by title?
A resolution approving the plans and specifications for the repair of distressed walls and surfaces at Recreation Park, Project Number PW25-05, pursuant to Government Code 830.6, and establishing a project payment account is ready for adoption.
Would anyone like to move adoption of this resolution?
So moved.
Keldorf on the first.
Second.
Boils on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes and is duly adopted. We are almost to the starting line. Okay. Item 10. This is appointments to Senior Citizen Housing Corporation Board and Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Any objection to me reading these appointments? Very well, and I will touch on another part of this in my comments as well. These candidates have been appointed to the following committees and boards. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Kelly Allen is on a partial term that will expire October 31, 2028. Christina Silva, a full term expiring October 31, 2028. Demario Wright, a partial term to expire October 31, 2028. The Senior Housing Corporation Board, Voting Member Julia Newman, a full term expiring June 30, 2029. Valerie Smith, non-voting, full term to expire June 30, 2029. Any questions? Very well. Okay, reports. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I would like to let everybody know that the Los Angeles County Registrar/Recorder County Clerk's Office will hold a series of hearings this fall on the Election Administration Plan, the EAP, which outlines how Los Angeles County conducts elections under California Voter Choice Act. More information about that can be found at lavote.gov. And also, would like to mention that our El Segundo's Vote by Mail Dropbox is open. We've been looking from the clerk's office. People are dropping in their ballots, so please remember to return your ballot one way or another, but a really handy-dandy way to do it is at our vote box right here at Grand and Holly. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Keldorf. Whoops, sorry, Madam Clerk.
Maine and Holly.
[inaudible]
I would like to reiterate, it is Maine and Holly. Maine and Holly. Councilmember Keldorf.
Sure. I'd like to start with a big debt of gratitude to our El Segundo Fire Department. We had many comments tonight, and not one of them was on Chevron, which I think is one of the biggest events that's happened since I've lived in El Segundo last Thursday. But the sheer fact that that coordinated response could, you know, make that not a bigger issue is truly remarkable. I think Chief Snow and Chief Ali were on duty that night and very appreciative to their efforts. And then for residents who have reached out and inquired, I, you know, will say that internally, we are talking about notification and how to improve upon that in the future. But appreciate the mayor getting on the news and letting everybody know what was going on. So, as I was also sitting there, listening to him in my pajamas, wondering what to do. Thank you for reassuring us.
Tourism has taken a giant dip from that. Councilmember Drew.
Nothing from me tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Boils.
I will echo Councilmember Keldorf's comments. Thank you to our fire department, and thank you, Mayor Pimentel, for your leadership, and thank you to staff.
Thank you. Mayor Portem.
Yeah, I attended the Environmental Subcommittee meeting on October 3, and the chair there, Tracy Miller-Varniky, requested a presentation from a group that's called Pure Water Los Angeles. And this is a combination of LA DWP and LA Sanitation, and they're going on this road trip to inform people about their plan to convert Hyperion from what it is now to where Hyperion actually, after it treats, it disposes of 200 million gallons into the ocean. This plan wants to take that same water, put it through a membrane filtration, reverse osmosis, and then they want to ship the water back towards Los Angeles. So it's not only an incredible undertaking of the Hyperion plant, but the construction of these new pipes and pump stations is going to be monumental. So there is currently a public comment period for their EIR on this, and the request was made from the Environmental Committee that I'll make here, that this staff and council give authorization to have Daniel Pankow review it and make comments on the city's behalf of any issues. I can tell you, at the end of this presentation, there was a roomful of folks from Los Angeles Sanitation and Department of Water, and my comments were basically, it sounds like a wonderful plan, but the people in this town can't even trust Hyperion to run the technology they have now, let alone this immense investment into new technologies. So someone from LA DWP had a conversation with me. He promised to reach out with some connections to the mayor's office to have more, a more transparent relationship with the folks at the mayor's office regarding Hyperion. So I would just ask if we can have consensus to have our environmental manager take a look at this and draft a letter.
Can I ask that, when he does that, he pulls me in? I've been dealing with our waste stream and these, which were two parallel projects, a county project and a city project.
Yeah.
So I've been, just being metaphorical, neck-deep in this for a few years, so I would be happy to add color.
I would love nothing more.
Add color. I would have added context to some of these things, as I understand them as well.
That would be great, Mr. Mayor.
Because we sit on, we sit on two different districts in sanitation and the Personnel Committee, so I've, I reek of it.
And then let me plug, all the information presented, the entire PowerPoint presentation that was presented at the Environmental Committee is up on our city's website. If you go to the tab that says "Our City," you click the link that says "Hyperion: What You Need to Know." You'll find the information that was presented at our committee meeting, as well as a link to their website that further explains their long-term plans and projects. So I think with that, we have consensus for the mayor to work with Mr. Pankow. Okay. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I've got a few items, a few to run through, so bear with me, and I'll try not to go a mile an hour. Per Councilmember Keldorf's comments, we've been talking a lot about the communication evolution and just how we build up our emergency management plan and update it. And part of that, I think that's important, if no one objects, is to make sure we pull Manhattan Beach into our exercise, or at least invite them, because that was a very important part of the communication, our difficulty in working across the other side of the refinery on that. We have a vacant spot on the Senior Citizen Housing Committee, and if there's consensus, we'd like to have, to cast four people on that and re-interview. We have a, one of our former members here, who I think we'd like another crack at it, to pull him back into it. Is there any objection to moving that in? So we have a full vote there. Is that...
Yeah, if you want to advertise for...
Yeah, advertise for it.
Yeah, also, you know, we're missing two on the environmental right now. So if they don't have all four show up, they don't get quorum, so we need to redo it.
So Madam Clerk, can we energize those? I spoke with Director Mancini about tree stuff, and that, you know, we have two-staff arborists, we have trees, and sometimes we want to make sure that we have coordination between Public Works and Parks, that when a tree of significant size is coming out, that we find a way of effectively communicating the how and the why. I think that'll put people at ease to know that Councilmember Keldorf's wood chipper is not just running around the city.
[inaudible]
I've got another one for you, actually, Councilmember Keldorf. I was at the mayoral convening, and the LA 28 subject came up, as it always does, but they will have on November 10, about 100 consulates represented at the mayor's office, and we're invited to attend that. So if there is a chance to meet some of the different prospective nations that may want to come and base themselves in El Segundo, that is probably a great place to do it. So if no one objects, I nominate Councilmember Keldorf, or any member of our special events team. So I will find that information and get it over to you. It should be at the Getty House, which is in West LA. It's very nice.
Now you're changing your team.
It'll be really nice. It is on November 10, which is the 250th anniversary of the Marine Corps, so I will not be there. We spoke of Mezurah, and I said those poverty numbers, which I found completely arresting when our supervisor announced the poverty, the birth rate poverty within our district, and it was a pretty sobering reminder. We had gone up there to advocate for what I think, on our city's behalf, of where we'd like to see our Mezurah homelessness funding going, and chiefly, that was for our housing trust. And they sort of understood the math on that and why it's important for long-term housing build, but the idea of, the counterpoint of like, look, poverty alleviation is a priority for this district, and here's why. I found it certainly very compelling. 88 cities coming up next week, the 88 City Summit in Long Beach, we'll be at that. City Manager and I will be at the League of Cities Summit coming up. Yeah, tomorrow through Friday, with nothing to vote on. Not a single agentyized item. Just a bunch of people pacing around in blue jackets. We have sanitation personnel. Again, we're still discussing how or if to dispose of the never-used Mesquite landfill, which is out southeast of the Salt and Sea. That is a big-ticket item that the county took on, a 100-plus-million-dollar project 20 years ago. Again, that is a landfill that has never had any fill, on the end of a train line that we built, much faster than the bullet train. Transportation Green Line EIR is out, and I'd be very excited to hear Redondo and Torrance yell at each other. We'll be there Monday morning for that. That should look a little more like pro wrestling. We went up to Burbank to celebrate former Imperial Elementary School student Quentin Tarantino a couple of weeks ago. That was super neat. The guy gave the most, like, the sweetest discussion of his time in El Segundo. It was a really, it was really compelling. You know, I thought we were going to get this sort of like very Hollywood-y speech. I mean, he was incredibly nostalgic, and he wanted to make sure the 7-Eleven is still there, because he assured us, he shoplifts from it every time and always has.
Amazing.
I was like, don't worry about it, buddy. Do I have a deal for you? Do I have a deal for you? And lastly, lastly, we met with South Coast Air Quality Management District last night. When they came out to Chevron, they take air and soil samples that are different from what our air monitoring system captures, so we requested any preliminary reporting they have. I know there's been discussion online, particularly some of our very knowledgeable former residents, about what do we do when 40- and 50-year-old buildings burn, what material burned on-site, and what that could have released. So we are efforting that information through the Air Quality Management District, which, of course, is an independent public body, to get those samples from them, both air and soil. We hope to have it soon. They're working on it. They're working on it as of last night. We had a pretty lengthy meeting. And with that, I will shut my fat face. City Attorney, over to you.
Nothing's easy. Thank you, Mayor.
City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I do have a few items. Before I do get to my regular Hyperion update, just a few comments on the Chevron incident from Thursday. I've met numerous times now with Jeff Wilson, who is the Corporate Affairs Manager over at Chevron, and I've got a few notes here that I took that I'd like to just share to kind of update you on where things are at and update the community. So as we know, the, the incident took place on October 2nd, Thursday, approximately 9:30. Chevron Fire Department personnel alerted the city of a fire inside the refinery. Chevron's Fire Department personnel worked in collaboration with your city of El Segundo Fire Department, Manhattan Beach Fire Departments, to successfully extinguish the fire by approximately 7:30 a.m. on that next Friday morning. Throughout the incident, Chevron remained in close contact with the city, and I know with you also very directly, Mayor. Chevron is cooperating fully with all regulatory agencies, and Chevron and Cal OSHA have launched investigations to determine the cause of the fire. Chevron is also cooperating with SCA QMD, who have independently monitoring and continuing its investigation, as you just shared. Information updates are also being provided by Chevron to the California Energy Commission. Chevron does, at this point, does not have any indication that the fire was a result of any terrorist activity. I know there were comments out there that it was just caused by something, and they, Jeff has said there's no terrorist activity involved in this case. Chevron's ISOMAX unit, which is where the fire was started, remained shut down because of the incident, but the majority of the refinery continues to produce transportation fuel, jet fuel and motor vehicle fuel. It's too early to spec, he said it's too early to speculate on the cause of the incident or the scope of damage to the unit. This investigation is still in its early stages. And finally, our discussions with Chevron will continue, and they are committed to come to your next council meeting and give you a full briefing at, at the next meeting. So that, that's what I gathered from Jeff and my, my meetings with him. Onto Hyperion. Thank you, Mayor Portem, on the Pure Water Project. I was going to report that. You've pretty much covered it. I think the only thing, I wasn't sure if you said that, but the EIR public comment period ends October 12th. Since the last meeting on September 16th, AQMD has received approximately 90 older complaints. Two issues, two notices of violation were issued during this period occurring on September 16th and September 19th. Hyperion will be having a plant community meeting, this, or community forum and tour on Saturday, this, on Saturday, October 18th, from 10 to noon. Hyperion staff will be hosting a community forum at their location and then doing the tour, so we will have that on, on our line on our city calendar, should anyone wish to sign up for that.
Yeah, can we make sure we push that out? That was a request that people had had, that they would no longer have the community meetings, that we've got that back as responsive to residents.
Contacted them, and they, they did schedule that. And then also, just as part of their regular maintenance, several activities are upcoming. There'll be numerous preventive, preventive maintenance efforts beginning, actually this past Sunday and finishing on the 11th. There's electrical maintenance work that'll be ongoing, that started on, on, actually this morning, and then also they'll, they'll be doing a fence line monitoring system audit on all of their fence line monitoring systems, and that, that also started today. Two other items, if I can report, and this has come out of our Public Works Department, but there'll be a free paper shredding, e-waste and compost event, which is free in conjunction with EDCO, on Saturday, October 18th, from 8 to 11, at El Segundo Public Works Yard, which is at 150 Illinois Street. Unwanted electronics will also be collected, including TVs, computer monitors, printers, cell phones. All of those items will be, will be collected at that time. Free compost will also be available while supplies last, and also on the 18th. And then finally, our fall bulky item cleanup event is also taking place, and that will run actually from this Monday through Thursday. So please put your items out by 7 a.m. Bulky item cleanup allows single-family and duplex residents to place unwanted items, curbside, that are too large or heavy to put inside the collection carts. Broken appliances, water heaters, furniture, old mattresses, and things like that to be put out. And that's it. Thank you.
City Manager, I forgot, I forgot one thing that, that, I'd like residents, please feel free to communicate with us if there are issues on the El Segundo beach part that is not our beach, just because that contract, right, as, as we've learned from the State Parks Department, is being renegotiated?
Correct.
Between all the services there, LA Sheriff's Department, LA Police Department, and the lifeguards, about who's providing what?
Yes.
And right now, we're in a little bit of a, the Venn diagram has pulled apart.
Yes, that's correct.
There's more, two separate rings about who's providing services, so, so we can do our best to, to try and address that.
Absolutely. Thank you for sharing that.
All right, seeing nothing further at time, oh, straight at eight o'clock. We are adjourned.